Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, September 13th at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. Thank you. Thanks for those of you joining us in person. We have our crew here and for those of you online zooming in. I'll be quick. Hard to believe that the summer is coming to a conclusion and that school is right around the corner. So I hope everyone got some family time and some well-deserved vacation and rest. And I'm sure our students are not excited about coming back to school in a week or so. But I hope they continue to enjoy the rest of their summer. As always, I have to say, I think in my almost eight years on the Board, I think it's been one of the busiest summers ever. We had a new teacher orientation yesterday at Tokaneek School, which was very exciting. The hiring continues and the interviewing, as we all know, there's not just a state and local, but a national teacher shortage. But Ms. Sion and the whole administrative team have done an incredible job of finding the right people to join our team here to be educators and administrators for our students. There is a convocation tomorrow, ceremony tomorrow at the high school, which is exciting. I actually, before I came to this meeting, was over at the new Ox Ridge School. With all the moving in going on over there, the school is absolutely beautiful. There are a lot of teachers there working and very excited setting up their classrooms. So that's going to be a very exciting day when we open up the new Ox Ridge School. I know Mrs. McCammon is working hard on the Henley Homes and Royal renovations. So that's another exciting project that's going on in town. So as always, a lot has gone on. The administration and the district and the Board have worked throughout the summer. You'll be hearing more on the topics that we discussed in terms of agenda items as we go forward. But I wish everyone a great school year. Welcome back to the school year. We look forward to, I think, more of a normal school year than ever. And we'll keep all our fingers crossed that everyone stays healthy as we move into the new school year. So with that, Michelle, are you running public comment?
I can run public comments.
Okay.
Good evening. For participants in person, please wait for the chairperson to acknowledge and call each participant to the microphone. For participants via Zoom, please click the raised hand option. The facilitator will acknowledge and unmute each participant one by one. For all participants, please state your name and address for the record log. You will have up to three minutes to comment. Would you like to start in person, if any audience?
No, we'll start in person with our folks here.
Okay.
Any public comment from folks in the room? Sure, please step up to the podium. Thank you.
How are you? Daniel Maresi, 507 Foxborough Drive, Norwalk, Connecticut. And I'm here because I am Senator Duff's opponent. And I'm here for no other reason than to learn and see and to let you all know that I am going to be a person who can amplify any and all issues that you may have. And I'm just happy to be here and I can't wait to listen to all of you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what, can you spell your last name again?
M-I-R-E-S-S-I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, Michelle, we'll look for any hand raised on Zoom.
There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. We will go on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Adley.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for those who are online and participating in person this evening. Yes, as the Board Chair said, it's not quite sure where the summer went. And I trust that our families had a relaxing, enjoy all the summer and our students making some special memories and moments together. We have had an orientation for our administrative team. It was last week, this week, we had the two days of the new teacher orientation, where we've approximately about 60 staff members attended. The opening convocation, as the Board Chair has said tomorrow, I would, the invitation is open to all the Board members. So if you want to be sandwiched, you can come a little bit earlier, maybe quarter of eight or so. We have an 8:30 hard start. And I'm absolutely delighted that Dr. Mark Brackett will be joining us. He's the founder of the Emotional Intelligence Center at Yale, professor, author, and colleague. And Dr. Brackett is flying in from somewhere tonight, doing our address to our staff tomorrow and then flying out to Italy immediately thereafter. He has been very accommodating and I'm very much appreciative of his efforts to be with us tomorrow morning. So that's an exciting opportunity and if you have a wee chance, and it'll be hole in your schedule, please feel free to pop by for some of it or all of it. So thank you. I just will be addressing, working with the planning and zoning regarding the lights. The next plan zone is the 6th of the 13th. I'll have to confirm what they're going to have on the agenda, but those, it's likely that's going to be one of those two dates. The opening day is next Monday and we have an early release schedule. The ELP orientations have been sent out along with the kindergarten, the transition for kindergarten to the first day of school. The assigned bus route will be available on Aspen tomorrow. And then I think that the routes will be posted on the website on Thursday. I think that's correct, on Thursday. It's great to see the Ox Ridge academic building up and running and the excitement that that's engendering. In addition to the excitement around the district about the work that's being done on the Homes, Henley, and Royal buildings. I'll leave that, Mr. Chairman, my remarks there because there's a couple of other updates on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. We'll move to approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the following minutes of the special meeting and the regular meeting held on July 26, 2022, and the minutes of the special meeting held on August 11, 2022?
I'm sorry, what, we have to amend them?
Okay, go ahead. All right.
So I sent an email earlier today, the motions that were made for the special meeting on the 11th, where we pointed the two MMS principles. I alluded that to Mrs. Bass, who is not in the room. So it now says Mrs. Akman as motioning and Mr. Worm was the second.
Okay.
As amended, I amended them, so just.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the amended minutes of the special meeting? And reg, special meeting, the minutes were amended, right?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the amended minutes of the special meeting and approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on July 26, 2022? Minutes of the special meeting held on August 11, 2022?
Move the amended.
Move the amended to the second. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the following minutes of the special meeting and the regular meeting held on July 26, 2022, and the amended minutes of the special meeting held on August 11, 2022? Mrs. McCammon, second by Mr. Maroney, all those that were present. Got that, Sarah?
Yes, thank you.
Good, thank you. We'll move on to Board Committee reports. I think we've been in summer mode, so I know we have committee meetings coming. So anything on, in the homes overall?
No, we've continued to work on the, on the design and including indoors and outdoors, but I have nothing to report. Thank you.
And I think Ox Ridge is scheduled to open and excited to welcome all the students there. We'll move on to presentations and discussions. We'll move on to the opening of school. Dr. Adley.
So just by way of an update to the Board on just a couple of matters. One will be enrollment. Enrollment increased by about 30, 34 students or so since last we spoke. It doesn't change any of the sections, so we still sit at 107 versus the 110 that is budgeted. The administration over the summer has been working on matters of security, including transition to our new lockdown system, which is training has taken place this particular week for our staff. We have been working with the State Department. We have updated our safer term plan. We were told two weeks ago that we are not required to do that. And then we were told a week ago that we were required to do it. So it's not really an issue per se, but for the most part, we're opening. I would say in general terms, we're opening as we left, thanks to Dr. Kenefak and David Knopf, our Health Director for the town. Again, for their cooperation, because we continue to meet over the summer. Our most recent meeting being yesterday. Just to review the policies and practices, I want to thank Emily Merritt, our Director of Nursing, our new Director of Nursing, who's been working on those communications. We will have a health and wellness communication going out from Emily and certainly in the next day or two at the latest. Emily may be online and I just wanted to give her a wee opportunity just to speak to the Board if you don't mind. Emily, can she hear me?
I can, yes.
Emily, thank you, and welcome to the Board. And if you wouldn't mind, I just wanted to take a wee moment or two just to succinctly provide the Board some of the mitigation strategies or otherwise, or lack thereof, that were participating.
Great. Hi, welcome. I hope everyone can hear me. And I'm happy to report, as Dr. Adley said, we actually have some positive COVID news. And not being that we're positive, but things are looking really, really good in terms of our vaccination rates, in terms of our natural immunity, and in terms of low levels of hospitalizations and so on. So we're really looking at opening the school, very much like how we ended it, very much like pre-pandemic practices. We are no longer, a lot of our mitigation, our mitigation measures are no longer necessary. So we're not going to be contact tracing anymore, no more social distancing, cohorting, no more weekly testing and things like that. So that's all very exciting for us. We will be, we did review the Department of Public Health Guidance and Recommendations, as well as the CDC, and we are, our approach is in line with them. We are going to be continuing to support vaccinations as they're an important line in preventing respiratory disease and disrupting continuous operation of schools. So we're going to continue supporting vaccinations. We are going to be really encouraging and recommending testing for anyone who's symptomatic, not asymptomatic testing, but anyone that wakes up and they're not feeling well. We, as a district, will have plenty of tests and people are encouraged to test. If they're negative, they should absolutely be in school. We're really going to try to optimize people being in school as much as possible. And obviously, if they are positive, we are going to go, continue to follow the CDC isolation practices, which is five days to isolate, and then returning to school with a mask for five days. Or if they would like to, alternatively, if they test negative for two days straight, that they will be able to remove their mask. We are not, again, we're not contact tracing, but anyone that does have exposure within a household, we're just going to ask them that they are that much more aware of their symptoms and if they need to test, that they'll continue to test. All this is written, as Dr. Adley said, in our safer turn plan. It will be posted shortly and I'm happy to answer specific questions. But the overview is that, you know, we're excited and eagerly waiting the start of the school year as, you know, typical pre-pandemic as possible.
Thank you very much. Board questions, comments? Do you think we are good? Thank you very much, Emily.
You're welcome, and thank you all for the warm welcome that I received.
Thank you. Glad to have you on board. Any more else on the?
No, so that, all systems are, we're ready to go. We're excited. Our staff are excited to receive our students back. I'm hoping your, your children are excited and looking forward to come back as much as they can after the summer. But, but we're ready and excited, as we always are. Actually, it's one of the greatest privileges an educator can have, is to look forward to that special day. And that is a very special day, both tomorrow for opening, opening of school and then the opening of school when the children actually arrive. If you've never had the opportunity or privilege to do that, that it is one of the greatest privileges that we have. And with that, we cherish that and we look forward to receiving the kids on Monday.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. We'll move on to update on mental health. Dr. Adley.
So I want to recognize Dr. McCarthy and also the members, particularly the members of the high school administration for their ongoing countless hours of support for our young people and preparing them for to come back to school and what will transpire as we move forward. We still continue to be in the post intervention, intervention plan and phase. We've been working with the town, that, along with the town. The town has developed a post intervention plan that it currently has now in place. There'll be other committees that are going to be established to work on various aspects of that plan. And we'll be participating on, on those particular committees. The administration has continued to work with state and local agencies, including the Hub, Silver Hill, the Darien Human Resources Family Centers, Child Guidance, all over the summer. We've also been working with families and getting them in contact with those services over the summer. And that's been beneficial to them. As we move forward shortly, in a couple of weeks, as we move forward into the post intervention training, that will be conducted by the Hub and that will take place with all administration and ultimately, ultimately the staff. As I shared earlier, Dr. Mark Brackett, it's by no coincidence that he is actually joining us tomorrow. That's a conscious, intentional step to provide professional learning and support in the area of mental health awareness for our staff as they prepare to greet our, our students and also to implement the Ruler process. QPR training is, which is really suicide prevention training, has been provided to all staff members. And now the bus, we're, right now for some of the bus drivers, we're holding off on that just for the comment, to be able to accommodate them. But for coaches, staff member, paraprofessionals, certified staff members, everyone will be receiving, including central services administrators will be receiving training on suicide prevention. And we thank the Hub for their ability to actually provide that training to us. That has, that was one of the reasons that sort of contributed to, and I appreciate the community's understanding of the half day. This was additional training that was planned over the summer. And we also needed that to bump a wee bit some of the other professional development, which really was necessary around the curriculum changes for implementation for the start of the year. So we feel that this will, veritably will support the staff, which ultimately supports our students. There have been changes to the commitment meetings, which the athletic and extracurricular commitment meetings. They have been lined around supporting mental health and reducing the stigma around mental health. There will be, the same professionals will be doing all of those workshops. Sometimes in the past, there've been different people. There's going to be consistent people to make sure that the message is consistent itself. We'll also be working with groups of students as we move forward on other areas. The general feedback on matters of what should remain the same, what should not remain the same. The general feedback from our professionals and guidance was the students will be looking for familiar structures and processes in place. So we're keeping those in place, but we're going to look for opportunities for our students and for our families to provide feedback on matters as, I will say, as they come up, but as they're planned in advance on the calendar. SEL, the screening, we have talked a little bit about the screening. So that has been explored by the district at this particular point. And the Board actually went through some professional development ourselves recently around new legislation. And there's a lot of new legislation around issues of mental health, including the appointment of a Safe School Climate Coordinator, which is already in place, and then a family coordinator. It's been our, in review on some of the processes and deciding how do we move forward and what's the best way to move forward. This, this communication ensures that we'd like for the Board to consider a Director of Mental Health for the district. The main focus that Director of Mental Health will be to proactively work with programming for staff, for students, around mental health liaison with outside agencies and basically be at a proactive disposition about this particular important topic to facilitate moving forward with future recommendations. So with that, I have included a recommendation to hire a district Director of Mental Health. And I think it was part of the package, it should be, right? I just picked it up. That's the main update. And again, I recognize the efforts of our, of our high school administration and particularly in preparing for students. This is a district-wide effort and focus. And I appreciate it's also a Board goal at this particular point for this year. And I appreciate the Board's support on those things. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll leave it for invite questions.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. We'll open up to Board questions.
Mrs. Worm. First, the SEL screening, is that the one that you had spoken about that's being provided by the state?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, do we know the name of that yet?
We do know the name of it. Chris, do you want to just give that aperture, D E S S?
Dessa.
Is your mic on?
Dessa is the test that the state is using and Aperture is sponsoring the administration.
Okay.
That's the company the state has partnered with.
Let's see. Currently, the Safe School Climate Coordinator is Julie Droler, correct? Is that, am I correct?
No, it's Dr. McCarthy.
Oh, it is Dr. McCarthy, okay. Then also, you mentioned formal and informal venues for the students to share how they feel. What do those look like?
They, some nature of another of focus groups.
Okay. And then my last thing is really not a question. It's more of, I'm a little, not concerned. I'm not ready to really get behind this yet until we look at what the students need. You know, I think we're, we're putting in more administration when we need possibly an outside source where students feel comfortable to talk to someone. I feel that the general education pool of students is large and currently our psychologists, counselors are overtaxed and there's really nowhere for these students to go.
I respect that, Mrs. Worm. They're probably not mutual exclusive issues that one could be, that both could coincide or cause, yes, thank you.
Mrs. McCammon.
I have a separate question, but Ellen, can you build on that point first? Which is, could this, I understand it as this resource is meant to sometimes help steer students in the right direction. I think there's a, there's a large internal component, which, but there's also something of a liaison component, correct?
I'll just say a simple yes to that, if it's as simple as that, yes.
Okay. The question that I had was more of a clarification. I see that this position is meant to be under the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. When we reformed a number of years ago, we created the SESS, Special Education and Student Services. And my understanding at the time that was a large part of the remit was mental health. I get that the, this role has a mixed set of responsibilities. There's, for example, the school climate that Scott McCarthy's doing, there's also SRBI, so I can understand. But just in the spirit of, of understanding how this role works within our organization, why is it aligned the way that it is?
I'll say the quick version is that it's designed to provide services to the entire population.
But so is SESS.
Well, I think, I, I think that SES in some cases does do both simultaneously.
Yeah.
I don't know, do you want to, do you want to say?
I would just make a follow-up, supporting Mrs. McCammon's point. When we reorganized this district, the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services was to serve all students. And I don't think in some cases they do. I think Mrs. Klein does in all cases, so thank you. And I would also echo Mrs. McCammon's question about, maybe we should, I have issues with this position, but one of the issues is, I think, Mrs. Klein's position as Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, the most appropriate place to put it. I also worry about getting administratively heavy. Can you go back to the page with the other districts? Can we? Sorry, I was looking there.
No, it's fine.
It's there too, I just can't see. No, no, we were there, sorry. It's just my eyes. Thank you, Mr. Maroney. Given the administration we have and given the setup in these districts, it's a little hard to compare. I don't know, are the setups similar? So if we're going to compare who has what, how many administrators are we looking at? Who deals with it? How do I compare Darien to St. New Canaan?
So I'll just say that I'm looking at our district and my professional judgment is in terms of, this is a difficult position by any stretch of imagination. Not just because of what happened recently, but, but also for that reason. I think that it really requires an administrative perspective to be brought to it. I think that's the level that it, that it should be at in order to proactively and effectively oversee the program and to advocate accordingly. I would actually invite Mrs. Klein, and she was involved in the design of it, as to why she feels that it should belong to, correct, on the Director too, if that's okay.
Just as a preference, as a preface, Dr. Tramburg and I work together on initiatives and practices for all students. So I just want to preface it with that. And we did have a great conversation about it. And I am aware of the history of how student services was under the auspices of the Assistant Superintendent of Special Education and Student Services. I think when we looked at it, and if you look at the design in the job description and responsibilities, what we looked at was the Safe School Climate Officer. And doing that is really a general education practice for all students. It comes under training for administrators, teachers, all constituents and stakeholders. So that was the first piece. The curriculum is, as it says in your memorandum, is analogous to SRBI, tier one, tier two, tier three. So it really does have a component of professional development for teachers and all staff members, administrators. So we looked at that again as the overarching of Chris's role in terms of looking at SRBI and interventions as a tiered level services. The other piece was the athletic department. And you saw that in the job description also. It's an oversight of coaches and training coaches and working with them. And again, it's not that it's limited to general education, but the oversight and that aspect was athletics. So if you look at curriculum, you look at social emotional learning, you look at ruler implementation. If you look at the notion of Safe School Coordinator, that's why it's looked as the umbrella. That said, I will be a strong part of the oversight, but that was, what was in our thinking in terms of making that determination.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. Mrs. Parent.
Can we discuss the timing of this? If, if this were to move forward, is this something you're anticipating putting in the budget for next year? Are you anticipating putting this in at some point this year?
I would recommend, if we could put it in as quickly as we possibly can. Now, we may or may not get someone of the, of the quality at this particular point, I want to recognize that. But I wouldn't preclude that we would not get someone of the quality and expertise that we need. It would be my recommendation that we do put this in as quickly as we possibly can.
Mrs. Parent.
Another, are you following up on mine or separate?
I got a new one.
Okay, my, my new one is, so in the job description, I don't see, so when, I think, when most people take mental health, they think psychologists, guidance counseling, that type of social workers. I don't see those people in here.
It's under qualifications for C.
Where is it? Oh, sorry. Why, but are they, is this position overseeing our, those members of our staff? Those, those people remain under, sure.
No.
Under Mrs. Klein's.
Is there an org chart underneath this?
Well, well, we can, we can put an org chart underneath it.
That's.
When most people think mental health, they think.
They're not, they're not overseeing.
They're not overseeing the mental health staff currently.
No, no, no.
So I think that's, that is a little bit of a confusion. Maybe it's the title of this position, I don't know.
We actually talked about the position, the, the nature of the position in terms of even the title. I don't want to call it like Climate Coordinator. This is, this is, this is a significant issue that we need to deal with. The Board has addressed it and one of the schools also. And I think we, we need to be direct and naming it and addressing it in that particular way.
But no, but there's no supervision of psychologists or otherwise. Goodness, Mrs. Klein.
If I may, just to confirm that, that is correct. No supervision of our psychologists or clinical staff or counselors. But I do want to go back, I don't know if Mrs. McCammon or Mrs. Akman's point of the liaison aspect of it. It does fulfill what's also included in this memorandum, the Safe School, the Family Care Coordinator, which is part of Public Act 2281. So that person would fulfill that role.
So Dr. Adley, I think to some of, but this worm has brought up other members of the Board and even Mrs. Parent, I guess, you know, we've been concerned at times, especially over the last year and a half. We've invested in the psychologists and continue and have invested in the guidance counselors. I guess it's the whole conversation around bandwidth. And does this role also help with looking at? And does this role also help with looking at those psychologists' schedules and what a day in the life looks like? Do we really have the right infrastructure in place for what the students may need? Because I'm not sure we're fully there yet with understanding what they may need. So that's where I guess, I would have thought there would be some kind of org chart underneath this person with all these health professionals. I understand the approach that you're taking, but I guess, you know, several board members have asked to look at, like, we know what a guidance counselor can handle and we've invested in guidance counselors. I think we want to make sure that we've got the right psychologist, social worker, and those folks in place. Does that role help with defining that?
Well, the role will help and certainly it can intertwine and interconnect and one can overlap the other. But it can also be helpful in actually designating that or sort of determining that. Now, you could say superintendent and the staff that we have, that's what you guys are hired to do. This is, this is going to be an ongoing process, so this, this person could be, will be influential in designing and informing any, any programs around mental health and would touch on workloads, what, what the psychologists are doing, social workers are doing, so on and so forth. I would certainly inform that and shed some light on it.
This has been called a community-wide suicide crisis, essentially. So then you, you walk through some of the integration that we've already done with the town and what we're doing with the town in this post-vention phase of, of the crisis. And you talked about various committees and then services for families. That's where my question is going, is this simply limited, I shouldn't say simply, but is this limited to the school community, this role? Or will, how will this role integrate with the rest of the community? And has this been?
I would, I would fully, sorry, John.
Yeah, I was just gonna, let me just, sorry, just finish by saying, and had you consulted with the experts as you've thought about this role from a community-wide basis?
So this would, there's a job, part of the job description in here, I can't see which one, which bullet is in it, but down there will be liaison with outside agencies. We've talked about perhaps bringing in outside agencies and so on to the school. This is an app, this perhaps has been an opportunity actually review those, make recommendations around those, but absolutely liaison with the agencies that we have been and more agencies. I would say that it's been, it's, we haven't been doing that over the years, maybe as much as we might, perhaps, right? But this one will be proactively working on all of those and be working closely with all the community groups that we have, the pertinent ones, and also the professional agencies that, that have been working with us. And we work closely with, with families and outside agencies also.
So just a quick follow up, as you crafted the job description, have you been consulting with the town side, for lack of a better term, in, in, in terms of crafting this, this role?
We, I did not, well, actually, I, I believe we did with Ally, I believe, right? I'll check on that, but I think that was the case, but we certainly did with the other agencies.
Okay, thank you. I'd almost, I'd almost like to see, I think, to that point, you know, the first two bullets serves as districts, climate coordinator, district family care coordinator, I'd like to see something where it serves as a district coordinator with the town health department and find out from the town health department if there's certain things in the job description that we could add that they have responsibility for too. I, I think we have to look at this very broadly as to how we can continue to work together from a town perspective. So, Mrs. Allen.
Mike. Is a statutory responsibility, family care coordinator is a new requirement by law. Implementing the mental health plan for student athletes, I did not know it's a new requirement, I'm assuming it means if I hear. And we already do, I would hope, universal screenings for kids who are not responding to SRBI in their tiers, because we've heard about that in the past. So I guess what I'm asking is who's doing this now? Other than the new requirements?
So, and, and many aspects, well, some, some, other than the new one, Dr. McCarthy in many cases covers most, well, a lot of this, and that's impacting his ability to do his own job description.
So I guess my follow up would be.
But in some cases, it's not being done, so I would suggest as well as we might want it to be done in certain areas, liaison with outside agencies as an example.
So I guess my follow-up question would be, how is, I, I understand we are meeting the requirements and I understand we are, we are, we are kids who are identified as SRBI and, and kids who need a family care coordinator, that we are creating maybe more capacity for someone to do these things. But what I want to make sure, and sometimes I worry about this title, is where it'd be, I think there's something different than the, the crisis we saw ourselves in last spring. This is not an answer to that. This is an answer to the requirements that we have by law now that you're saying we could do better if we had capacity. But it is not kind of directly related to the outcome of the work this summer.
Well, it is directly as an outcome, but I would also say as an example, by now, perhaps you could say like suicide prevention training, right? Or otherwise, if you had a person in this actively, proactively working on those things, that's the latest and best and so on and so forth, then they would be bringing these things to the table for us to actually implement. As opposed to understandably responding to the situation we have and then doing some of those things. So I just think that this position for somebody or for the district would be a very positive proactive step in proactively thinking about how to address this and giving expert counsel on how to move forward.
Mrs. McCann.
Speaking of, what, what I would like to understand, there's, again, there's some new content here, there's some content that there are things that we're just finding a new home for. Can Shirley and Chris both speak to the impact of not having a home for some of this work in the recent past? What impact has it had on your department? What are you anticipating looking forward, you know, as you look forward? What does this open up for you?
Again, as a preference, I think the notion is before, but we've, we've spoken over the last couple of years, which is why we came to the board and asked for additional services of school psychologists, elementary school, but the numbers have truly increased exponentially in terms of students with social emotional needs. We know that we are also mindful of wanting to reduce any stigma that goes along with mental health support. We know that I think it was something of a 40% increase in students who are identified nationwide in areas that deal with anxiety and depression, so the need has become greater. I, I think with, with the recent loss, we're also mindful in our community as well as other communities that having this opportunity to not be in different school silos, but to be in a community. So it's one person who brings together, we're looking at ELP, to your point, Mr. Seeny, through, you know, 18 plus for all our students and families in town. And what this did open us, to open up to us when we did work with Ally and the town and worked with Child Study Center and really learned. And yes, we did ask Dr. Welt about it also in terms of bringing in a person. Is that person the liaison is a big important role. But it's also bringing together ELP, elementary schools, middle school and high school, and looking at a continuous spiral, if you can, from early childhood through adult, or young adults, through young adults. So I think that's the difference of the role. It's that there's a spiral going through all of the schools and the community and the town and bringing all of our mental health supporters together. And those would be counselors, social workers, psychologists, agencies, families and the community. So I think that's the design of it. So the need has gotten greater and looking at it in, in a, in a total community, I think is what's important in the design of this role.
So before Chris jumps in, has there been an impact to your department for what you, your ability to serve students?
And, and I'll answer that in two ways, yes, it has, but we've continued to serve students. So, so I do want to say that, and I say that with fidelity and, and commitment. We've, we've just, you know, we've gone from a 12-hour day to a 14-hour day, you know, you find ways to do that. When, when we need to, we came in our weekends, I mean, we've done that to support it. But as Dr. Adley said, Dr. McCarthy has worked in collaboration with the high school in this case, all of the stakeholders, counselors, social workers, Principal Dunn and the administrators and APs to really support that. So it's added on to everyone's responsibilities. That said, they've all done it in an exemplary way with respect and commitment.
Thank you.
And I'll pick up on, Mrs. Klein used the word silos. So what happens often is there's compartmentalization of SEL and how things are operationalized. And I've talked about this quite a bit, because when, I think during the pandemic, we really started talking about meeting students' SEL needs and what does that actually mean? And there's a direct instructional component and there is meeting the needs of students all of the time, because we're talking about relationships and how students work together. So this position could really be the bridge between those two things and actually have some written viable curriculum that all students experience, whether it's through how we're approaching responsive classroom, developing our ruler lessons and having a lens over those pieces, really looking at flex and advisory and making sure that we have that lens in those lessons as well. And so I'm thinking about the direct, the direct and guaranteed experiences that students will have. And so we have an SEL committee right now and I co-chair that with Dr. McCarthy and Mrs. Drohler. So that shows how we are always working together on this, but there, there's not a, there's not a lead of that. Who is, who has that direct responsibility? And that would be helpful.
So can I just make sure I understood what you said? You're looking at basically integration through the, the journey of a student, if you will. And then you're also looking at a better integration across experience, like between a classroom and outside of a classroom or flex. Is that a correct?
That's correct, and like a visual that I think of when we did the SEL presentation sometime last year. One of our visuals was a bunch of columns of these are the different things. And they were working as a bunch of different things and we need to make sure that they're all working together. So horizontal, horizontally and vertically.
Thank you.
Mrs. Worm.
So, you know, again, my concern is just that in, you know, next year, right? We have now added more administrative, more administration and close to bringing in people that will directly impact students, specifically at the high school where we have heard over and over again that their needs are not being met.
Thank you, Mrs. Worm. Mrs. Parent.
So I'm just building off of what you just said, Dr. Tramburg. So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of envisioning in my mind, and correct me if I'm wrong, is this like a department head, for lack of a better term, for SEL and emotional well-being? And is it, because it involves curriculum, it involves programming, it involves all sorts of more in-classroom direct instruction? Is that accurate?
I'll say it's, it's a yes and, so a department head typically is working with a group of people with the same certification and specialty that write guaranteed and viable curriculum together. In order to meet the needs across all disciplines, we have to tap into someone who's leading a charge with psychologists and school counselors and social workers and general education teachers. So it's creating a a class, like a cluster that would lead that work in order to make sure all students have access. But it's definitely across many departments, so a department within a, not within a department, but.
Can I just add to that, Dr. Adley, on this parent, just to give kind of a parallel to it? If you think of question persuade and respond with the QPR training we're going to be doing this week. And, and to your point also, Mr. Seeny, it's because everyone gets trained. So our food services people, when we're able to do that, but our secretaries, all of our certified, uncertified staff, everyone in the building who comes in contact with our students, they're all part of this training. So the notion is that's the same idea of it's not a silo of a specific discipline. It's the notion that pre-K through 12 plus, all stakeholders in the building that come across children are familiar with and understand, and whether it's in the athletics department, the theater department, the music department, academics, that they're all trained and understand how to address children's social emotional needs and especially in the community outside connecting with the town as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Klein. Mrs. Bass.
Thank you. I, I think this is more of an idea than a question, but the conversation is making me feel like this role could be instrumental in helping us build. We talk a lot about measures of success and how we define success and how that needs to evolve a little bit. And we have a vision of the graduate now, which is a wonderful living document, but some of those things are hard to measure and it's harder to say we've hit this, that and the other thing. And it sounds to me, the way you're describing this role, that it might be a helpful tool in making sure that starting in ELP and kindergarten, we're seeding all of these qualities in our, in our students, the resilience and the other softer qualities, softer, I guess, I mean, because they're more amorphous. And, and have kind of eyes on that continuum all the way through 12th grade, which to me sounds promising and hopeful. And also as a preventive tool to help make sure that we are developing kids who are as strong and healthy and aware of themselves as they can be.
I'd actually like to ask if administration would directly respond to Mrs. Worm's question about directly impacting students. As I read the, the job description, I can see a couple of areas where that might be the case, but I would love to hear it in the words of someone who's an educator. And the second piece of it is, I think that I'd also love to hear that this is not the last, this is not the final word. This is not our rubber stamp on, we've solved this problem. I, I would assume that this is part of an ongoing conversation, so I'd love a little preview of sort of what that this means in terms of that ongoing conversation. Again, some of it's written here, but I, I think it's an important point, it's been raised to me as well, that our students are the front line and that's where we want to be focused.
I understand what some of the comments have been and some of the suggestions, and I'm certainly not ignoring the suggestions. This is directly, if the board asks, what would you like in terms of what you think you need in terms of supporting mental health? This is supporting the kids, in fact, I'm pretty much offended that it's, and it's implied that it's not in supporting the kids. That high school administration have been working all summer, all summer, working with outside agencies, doing whatever it can for kids. And this position was designed to directly, over the next couple of years, support our kids directly and be proactive in supporting those. Some of them are directly, some of them will, will take a wee bit of time, but they're not mutually exclusive ideas that we're not going to be doing other things simultaneously.
I don't know about your, your first question, what was the second question?
Well, I wanted to understand where this fits in the continuum of what you guys are talking about. And then I wanted to, I wanted you to speak more directly to what the direct impact of student looks like. I hear your point that administration, I've been working hard. And I, I don't think, I don't think that is actually what's on the table. But I, I think the question on the table is, where do we need to focus? I respect that you've come to the table with this is where you want us to focus. But I hope that you'll just take a minute to clarify, again, the impact to students and, and this as, as part of a continuum.
I can say that from my lens, the two places where there's direct impact on students is there will be curriculum that goes with mental health and wellness, so that's a deliverable for what students will experience. And the other piece that administrators bring is they provide professional development. So they're creating the conditions for the teachers to be able to provide appropriate supports. So those would be to, to direct that jump at me, jump out for me.
Mrs. Klein.
To answer your question, to answer Ms. Worm's question. I think if you bring in, and thank you to the Board of Education for the additional psychologists in the high school. So we have, and I won't go over because you know the resources we have, pre-K through 12. I think if you bring in another practitioner, if you brought in another psychologist, another social worker or another clinician, that would give you one more person. That's a very different experience in terms of your question of what we'll be giving to students. When you look at an ELP through grade 12 and you look at a continuum of teaching and learning, of supports, of training for all, you know, your two psychologists in the entry schools, your six guidance, school counselors in your middle school, your three psychologists, your four psychologists, your fifth psychologist. When you look at bringing it all together, it becomes a first language. So all children are taught a first language of mental health practices, of knowing that there's no longer stigma to that, of what resources to go to. So it's not the number of resources you have, I think it's the coordination of efforts. And that the whole climate of the school becomes a climate of wellness and mental health and looking at that. And that the whole climate of the school becomes a climate of wellness and mental health and looking at that. And I think that's what we've been working on. And I believe having this one person to coordinate all of those efforts, ELP through 12, will make a direct difference to students and families.
Thank you.
Dr. Adley, you said you envision, if you could, hiring this year for this position immediately. How, do you have any suggestions on how the board would do that?
Financially?
Yeah.
Well, I suggest I would do, would be to transfer funds through a budget control or otherwise.
Okay. And so do we have a rough, rough estimate of like what we're hiring at or what step or?
So given.
I know you don't have to have it tonight, but I'm saying if we're going to move forward with this, we would have to make a transfer, vote on it, you would have to begin hiring. I mean, we just need to know the steps and the timing.
So the steps would be the board essentially would have to go into negotiation with administration because you create, we have the ability to create a position, and then we would have to negotiate on the salary with the administrative union. So we'd have to, we'd have to do that. I don't want to give out a, a number publicly or otherwise before going through the process that we legally have to go through.
So just, just outlining for the board, so we would discuss this tonight. At some point, you'd be asking us to take action unless that's a motion that gets entertained tonight. Then you'd have to meet with the union. So we are looking at going out to hire if, and I'm not presuming anything for the union, the union can, whatever their meeting schedule is, but you're really looking at going out to hire in September for this position, if everything worked, works quickly.
Yes, that's, yes.
There's not enough money in budget control.
Well, I said budget control and others.
So, so we would need to make a transfer from something. You would bring us a transfer.
Awesome.
Okay. Or, or not. Okay. I was just trying to outline where we are in the nuts and bolts if we move forward.
You know, if the board want to do a special appropriation for that, I guess you could, but, you know, trying to be, give you the other option.
So either we make a transfer within the budget or we go for a special appropriation. Sorry.
Other questions? Mrs. Worm.
So it's not a question so much, it's more just a comment, because at no point did I try to insinuate that the administration was not working hard all summer. And the point that you're offended, I apologize that you're offended, but I've been asking questions since last November, and I've been given answers like we've got this or we've already done this. So, you know, the feeling's mutual because I've been completely ignored in my questions. So to ask me to vote on something or bring something forward like this when the questions haven't been answered, if there's no background information. Just trying to get my questions answered.
Just to be clear, there's no vote on this this evening. This was brought
Right. Yes.
to be a discussion and to ask all the good questions that are being asked. So, and we can continue the discussion also. Yeah.
So, so I think the discussion has brought a lot of color to me to the job description. Because in reading the job description, I was very unsure of a lot of what has been discussed tonight. I think that the job description needs to be much more tightened up to bring in the points that were discussed here tonight. Because it, to me, the job description is very vague and bland, if that's the right word. And this is much more, the discussion is much more robust positioning. Because I think that, and I specifically, sorry, I specifically point to the term designs appropriate professional learning programs and provides support for administration and staff. Dr. Adley, you mentioned that this person would be researching suicide prevention and bringing those forward. To me, that's a different design than designing appropriate professional. Maybe I'm wrong in that, but to me, that, that's more robust than this. And that would be going in doing, I see Mrs. Ritchie in the audience, would that be going to research and bringing to the administration and staff, what would happen if we delayed school opening for high school? Would that be something that this person would take?
That particular topic?
Or, or other topics to help prevent, to, to provide better mental health to the district students.
I think there, I think that the not the health covers a lot of territory, right? And you can make connections or there, there could be conscious things, there are things that are absolutely connected, and there are things that are tacitly connected. So how far and wide do you want to go? And would, would depend. If someone was asked to, if the district was looking at, at later arrivals and was asked to comment on the mental health regarding that, I'm sure that person would be contributing to that discussion if that was the case. I can't imagine it now, if that was the case, given your example.
But they wouldn't be leaning that because, because your point, where I'm struggling with was your point was they would do the research and provide the suicide prevention to the staff and everyone. And to me, I'm, that, that is more proactive than reactive. And I'm, I'm struggling with what is the proactive part of this job and what is the reactive part of the job?
Well, I think to that point, if we could go back to the tape, I think, Mrs. Klein, you kind of summarized, I think, a little bit in a cultural way of the K through 12 and what this role does. It's not about adding another psychologist, it's about what those psychologists are actually doing or implementing and how that's coordinated across all the schools. I, I think I would like, to me, that made it all click, the way you described the role and the continuum of services and how we have to look at each student in the, to your point, Dr. Tranberg, the verticals and the horizontal. So that almost seems, that would help in the job description, I think, for me. That we could do. Sure. But I think to that point, the conversations we had and the questions that Mrs. Worm brought to the table about what are our students need, they kind of came together the way you described it. So maybe we could tweak this a little bit. But thank you very much. Mrs. Best, you have your.
I was actually just going to follow up on Dennis's question. The coordinate districts' policies and procedures regarding creating and maintaining a positive school climate. That does sound to me like, whether it's the example of later start times at the high school, or we never have school on Tuesdays, or, you know, just that that might be something that this individual would explore and recommendation for or against. Would I be understanding that correctly? Is that something that? I'm sorry, is that the kind of idea that this individual might explore and provide a recommendation for or against?
It's not precluded from it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Best. All right, good. Thank you. Good discussion on that. All right. Mrs. Klein, are you set? Okay, good. Thank you. We will move on to update on summer facilities projects. Kevin is with us. Thank you, Kevin.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to talk about the summer facilities update, or as I've affectionately dubbed it, the what did I do last summer memo?
Yeah, right. I think, Kevin, in the interest of everyone's time, I'm sure everyone has read through this. Are there any high points you want to mention? Or, and the only other thing that comes to mind, are we in line with the town since we do bids that we're not going to be doing any paving this year also?
So we are doing paving. I had reached out to the town to get their bid results from late July. We ended up finding a state contract holder that is actually paving the middle school bus lot as we speak. And that project is set to conclude, weather permitting, this weekend.
You're comfortable with the bids, I assume?
Yes, that's quite.
Then just whatever highlights you want to hit. Thank you so much.
Sure. The, the, the projects are all in varying stages of beginning, implementation, and conclusion. Paving, for example, is nearly done, while the high school track is just in the planning phases. Some of the items have very long lead times, some over 26 weeks, some up to a year. But we are in a very comfortable position with all of the projects that are here as they relate to each of the individual schools. The one I'd like to call the board's attention to is the air conditioning for central office.
You sure you want to bring that up?
No, we're approximately 80% complete and expect to have that fully up and running in the next four weeks. No, we've tried.
Look, you louder.
It will be much quieter.
Yeah. We're up. Are you, are you good on all your vehicles from the floods where, where we need to be with vehicles?
Correct. We are good from the replacement vehicles, and the two vehicles in this proposal are just the replacement cycle to the fleet.
Normal cycle.
Correct.
And this Ford Suburban, we have four Suburbans. Are we going for a fifth?
Also, P and Z only granted us access for four, so if we, if we want to go for fifth, we'd have to go to P and Z to amend that regulation. But right now, we're comfortable with four. We have four vehicles, we have four drivers.
You'll bring that up through a normal budget cycle. Okay, good. All right. Anything else you need, Kevin?
Anything we?
Anything else you need?
No, nothing that we need at the moment.
All the schools ready?
Yes. And if I could just take a moment and say I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the custodian, maintenance, and grounds workers for all the work that they've done this summer. They've really worked tirelessly to get the buildings ready.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Mr. Seeny.
Can I just follow up on the resurfaced stadium track?
Yep.
Some of the things you outlined, what you're really worried about, because it sounds like you could reopen up a can of worms.
That's exactly right, and that's, that's our concern. The, the underlayment of the track is in varying stages of disrepair, and the drainage issue at the pits is a concern. So we are going to be working with the design team and the firm to come up with an idea and a scope of work. And, you know, we're working on that as we speak and getting ready for the spring.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board questions? Kevin, thank you. Thank you for staying.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Marne. Thank you for making such a smooth transition and effective transition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We move on to discussion and possible acceptance of contemplated gift from the Tokonik PTO, Dr. Adley, and Mr. Betts.
Mr. Betts, Principal Betts, how are you doing?
I'm doing well. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to present the potential donation from Tokonik PTO for additional playground equipment. They are offering to purchase a traditional swing set, a basket swing, and a zip line slash trolley for our larger playground. Currently, our back playground, which serves our first through fifth grade, does not have those features. And we hope that those would be, provide some additional enjoyment and attraction for our older students.
Thank you, Mr. Betts. I would just ask, we've been dealing with this up at Tokonik and the movement of swing sets up there, we found there's bells and whistles and other things that make noise other than students. So it would tend, tend, Ox Ridge, I would tend to stay away from bells and whistles and other things that make noise, other than students playing on the swing. So.
Just laughter, that's it.
Yeah. Board questions or comments? Yes, Mrs. Parent.
I want to say thank you to the Tokonik PTO for this very generous donation.
Yes. So if there are no other board of questions, I will second Mrs. Parent and say thank you to the Tokonik PTO, Vicki Coughlin and Kelly. Kelly, Kelly. Yep. Thank you. Incredibly generous, as they always are. So thank you very much. Great. Thank you. Motion to accept the contemplated gift from the Tokonik Parent Teacher Association, Mrs. Best, second by Mr. Maroni. All those in favor? Thank you. We'll go on to further discussion and possible action on board goals for 2022, 2023. Dr. Adley.
So the revisions were made as I, as, as were discussed. Goal one, the last bullet liaison with HHR Committee on Security Matters. Goal two, support participation in state pilot of SEL, the Aperture SEL screener. Goal three, revise the strategic plan where necessary and needed. And goal four, to strike out achievement after celebrate student, students and staff.
You could act as far. Board questions or comments? We have a motion to approve the proposed revised board goals for the 2022, 2023 school year as presented. This is Parent, second by Mr. Seeny. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Adley. We'll move on to further discussion and possible action on the provisions to board policies. Series 5,000 students, 5240 easing, 5260 use of reasonable physical force, 5350 immunizations, 5710 non-discrimination of students, and proposed new board policy 1320 civility and respectful conduct. We'll turn that over to Mrs. Akman and Ms. Saya.
Any questions on these policies? They've been out there now for quite some time. So I think if the board wants to entertain a motion, I, I would just add, from a policy standpoint, I do believe we need to add to the agenda voting on the superintendent's contract. It has not happened yet, and we need to do that in public. So just to note, maybe next meeting, because it stands unvoted on at the moment. But these policies are, are good to go unless anyone has questions. And I haven't received any since July 26.
Mr. Seeny.
Yeah, I apologize. That is a personal issue and a double delivery down the South Carolinas. So I do have some questions, and I'm sorry I didn't get around to them. I'm just looking at policy 1320 and the civility and respectful conduct policy. I guess what I'm looking at is, is this, reports seem very redundant to the meeting conduct, conduct policy in 9310, the removal of board officers in 9170. And I was just giving, I don't know, maybe you could just give a little color of what your guys' thoughts were adding board members and board meetings to this since we already had policies.
Sure. Mrs. Saya can start, and I'm happy to follow up.
So the policy committee had requested that the civility policy make a statement that it applied to board members as well. I did check with Jessica Smith about the meeting conduct policy, and she said that the provisions, the recourse is similar, which is to terminate a person's right to speak. When we get to the 9,000s, if you want to deal with Board of Education meetings differently, we can, but this doesn't conflict.
And I, I think part of the conversation at the meeting was that we seemed to talk about participants in the meeting, but we didn't want people to think we were setting a standard for, for, you know, people attending our meeting, but not for ourselves. So it was more to be inclusive rather than to be exclusive in any way. We talked about all participants. Does that include board of members? Does it not? We were just looking to make sure that we, we helped everyone who was participating in a meeting to the same standards. Like I said, it was, it was meant to be inclusive and not demand things of our audience.
Okay. The second question is the use of the word bylaws in the, it's on that first page under 1320. Do we have bylaws? Or I guess that's what I, I don't know if this is, should be called policy or just bylaws?
It, it may be a holdover. We used to have bylaws, and we no longer do. So it may just be a holdover. I'm just trying to call it up.
I tried to find bylaws on our website. I just couldn't. I just thought maybe you might want to change the language there.
Yeah, you're on, sorry, Mr. Seeny, can you just repeat what? It's on the bottom of 1320. In red.
Board will enforce this policy with respect to conduct by the board members, consistent with board bylaws and applicable law. It should be, I think, policy.
Yeah. So you are correct. I think maybe, Mrs. Saya, we could make that change. We used to have bylaws, and we used to have a civility policy, and when we updated, that's just a good catch.
And then, and then, I mean, there's, there's really no recourse for board members, right? There would, there's not. recourse for board members, right? There would, there's not a section for recourse because there is no recourse. There's only recourse for officers.
Yeah, there's, there's really no recourse. What we talked about is at the school level, there's kind of an administrative civility policy. And then we had the meeting conduct. And we were just trying to say like, if we're going to hold our parents accountable to schools, if we're going to hold our audience accountable. We just wanted it to be top to bottom.
Okay.
But yes, you are correct. There is, there's actually very little recourse contemplated in Connecticut state law.
Okay, great. Thanks. And sorry it came in so late.
Nope, the bylaws is a good catch. Thank you.
The other board?
Just, just building on that a little bit, just to clarify, because we have a couple of different policies. If we're talking about students, that's the bullying policy. This is specifically referring to adults, right? Not students?
No, so this, well, this is not referring to students, but student, the schools themselves have code of conduct, like the Ox Ridge code. And so we were trying to say, if we are teaching in our kids civility and respect, we should maybe make sure top to bottom, we have civility and respect. And we went through a couple iterations. We looked at, I mean, this has probably been three cycles of policy meetings to try to come up with the right one. More is setting a tenor than to really be punitive to anyone and kind of saying we we're asking our children to be respectful. We'll do our best to be the same.
So, okay, the, the other person involved is, is a teacher. So it, students are governed by bullying policy. Says any board employee who believes they were subject to conduct.
This does not have to do with bullying. Sorry, I just want to be clear. Students are not like covered.
Trying to clarify, right? So students are not covered, sorry, this does not cover student conduct. Right? This is just the conduct of adults.
Yes.
So the other, then there are teachers, right? This does not cover teacher conduct. This is just adults. Although a teacher or a student could invoke this policy, they are not governed by this.
It's from board employees. So wouldn't teachers be considered board employees?
Yeah, they would. So that's what I was trying to clarify.
Yes, it is board employees.
It's board members and third parties. Okay.
And students are actually covered by this. It doesn't, wouldn't need to rise to the level of bullying, but using offensive language and, you know, whatever. Things that are enumerated at the beginning of the policies.
Okay, bullying has a specific definition. This is, this is not.
Broader.
This is broader.
Mr. Brown.
I can't hear you. What'd you say?
Wants to make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the, to approve the policy changes as outlined in the memorandum dated July 26, 2022, and the proposed new board policy 1320. With a slight amendment.
Yeah, we have to prove it with.
As amended.
As amended.
Mr. Seeny, second by Mrs. Bastallos in favor.
Was there discussion after a second? I, I just, I was going to make a proposal, we accept the 3,500 rules and reject the 1320, just because it's either redundant or subjective. So I don't know how we can do that at this time procedurally. So I defer to the chair.
I didn't hear you. I couldn't hear what you said.
So I was going to suggest we add an alternate motion. So I don't know if it's too late if I lost my chance, but I was going to propose accepting the 3,500 and deferring action on the 1320 at this time. Being as drafted, it's either redundant or, or unclear. It's a little too subjective. So I, I don't, that's what I wanted to propose.
So may I pass for a second, Mr. Brown?
There is a second to Mr. Brown's. So that fails. So we move on with the amended. May have a motion to approve the policy changes as amended and outlined in the memorandum dated July 26, 2022, and the proposed new board policy 1320. Mrs. Ackman, Mr. Maroni, all those in favor? Everyone but Mr. Brown. Thank you. Personnel report. Marge, anything to?
So the update is up till now, we hired 66 new certified staff. We still have four openings. Our administrators have done an incredible job. I spoke to Christian Docum today and said, how did you find three science teachers at the middle school? He said he sent out 500 emails. So.
500 emails? Thank you. Mrs. Ackman.
I just have a question. We have, if I'm reading this right, we have a fair amount of resignations at the middle school very late in the year. Do we have any color on why? We had a lot kind of in June, it felt like, and then I keep asking about exit interviews or if we're getting information because the middle school seems to be seeing a lot of resignations.
I've done some exit interviews. They've been a little bit all over the place. Let me just say that I've spoken to the HR director in Greenwich about poaching this late in the year.
Very funny. I heard the same thing, totally, but yeah. It's just a lot of resignations for August is an observation. And I just don't know how to interpret it. And maybe there's nothing to interpret other than a change in career, but I just don't know what to do with it.
Mrs. Worm.
I mean, the fact that you mentioned Greenwich, I'm assuming most of it is because of pay.
So it's because of pay. I'm not sure that some of the people who left would have looked if they hadn't been approached by a former employee. So.
So certainly, I think, I think we've talked to several other districts too to stop poaching. Certainly, it's, it's more than normal in this case concentrated in some, in some ways. So I think there's a lot, probably a lot of factors at play. I think everybody realizes the teacher shortage at the moment, people making decisions to do other things, travel distance compensation. I think they're all, to which degree, I'm not completely sure, but this, this represents a, a lot of different directions that the staff are taking, either relocating or stepping out or doing something different.
Yeah, there are four people who resigned in August who just decided they weren't going to teach anymore. That's kind of late to make that decision. So it's later than usual.
Mrs. Ken.
This is a request for a future meeting and it may be more, the answer may be more appropriate in exact session. You'd have to decide, but I love seeing the P R, P A are important. It helps us understand who's leaving. Sometimes that's not something I want to understand, but it would be helpful, I think, maybe just with a year of a large turnover, I'd love to see if there's, I'm sure you were doing it, Marge, any analytics that help us understand, for example, have we lost a certain percentage from a given school? Are we worried? We'd mentioned science, you know, what does our turnover in science look like year over year? I would be interested in starting to talk about whether or not there's any trends to look at in some of these resignations.
I just want to be clear that the science turnover this year was not because of Christian, it's a shortage area. People are begging science teachers and giving them lots of money to come to other districts. So
Yes.
That's not an indictment of Christian.
Which is something I think that we, like if we, something like that be valuable to discuss and understand as a board. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Marge. Move on to action items. Appointment of an impartial hearing officer for student disciplinary matters for the 2022, 2023 school year as they arise. Dr. Adley.
Yes, the details of legal counsel has been attached and Sage Accor has been doing this certainly ever since I've been, been here. He hasn't actually had to be, be used close, but that had, not, never actually had to be used for a hearing just yet, but hopefully that remains that way. But he does a good job and well, well renowned and well known in the area and also, also gets a good recommendation from our own legal counsel.
Questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve.
May have a motion to appoint Stephen M. Seedorf as the impartial hearing officer for student disciplinary matters for the 2022, 2023 school year as they arise.
Second.
All those in favor? Got that, sir?
Yep.
Discussion and possible action to delegate to its appointed hearing officer responsibility for hearing expulsion, expungement requests and for hearing school accommodation appeals, including transportation appeals as provided by the statute. Dr. Adley? Anything to add there?
Nope, that's just, that's what he's going to end up doing.
May have a motion to delegate to the appointed hearing officer responsibility for hearing expulsion, expungement requests and for hearing school accommodation appeals, including transportation appeals as provided by statute. Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Maroni, all those in favor? Good. We'll move back to, Michelle, are you still with us? We'll move back to public comment.
Yes, I'm still here. Is there anyone in the audience?
Anyone in the audience from a public comment standpoint? Anyone with their hand raised online?
There are no raised hands at this time, Mr. Benin.
Okay, thank you very much. I wish everyone a successful start to the new school year and have a good rest of your summer. May have a motion to adjourn. Kevin, second by Mr. Maroni, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you.